All right, good evening. My name is Paul Hughes. I'm the Regional Public Affairs Officer for the U.S. General Services Administration. I'll be your moderator for tonight's event. On behalf of the U.S. General Services Administration and our valued federal partner, the U.S. District Court for the District of Connecticut, thank you all for joining us here tonight for this public meeting on the proposed project for the new courthouse here in Hartford. And on the right slide. Tonight's meeting is an important part in the Environmental Impact Statement, otherwise known as EIS process, for the proposed construction of a new court here in Hartford. Some housekeeping notes. This meeting is being recorded and transcribed. There is an ASL interpreter here if anyone needs one. If you have questions or wish to comment in Spanish, we have a person available to assist. As part of tonight's presentation -- I might be on the wrong slide, sorry about that. No, I'm on the right one. As part of tonight's presentation, we will describe the NIPA process, provide an overview of GSA's proposed project, review findings of the draft EIS, and provide an opportunity for you to comment on the draft EIS. As we move through the meeting, please remember that tonight is an opportunity for you to provide GSA with input on issues and concerns important to you. Tonight you will hear from -- tonight you will hear from information from GSA Project Manager Bob Herman, GSA Site Program Manager Sarah Masarello, the Honorable Michael P. Shea, Chief Judge for the U.S. District Court for the District of Connecticut, and Leon Kolenkavich, GSA's contractor for the EIS process as part of the National Environmental Policy Act. On behalf of GSA, again, thank you all for being with us here tonight. And now I will turn it over to Leon, our first speaker.
Hi. This slide here describes the National Environmental Policy Act for NIPA. NIPA requires federal agencies to consider and document the effects of their proposed actions on the environment, which includes both the natural and the human environments. It is intended to involve the public in the decision-making process. GSA has prepared a draft environmental impact statement, or EIS, per NIPA requirements to assess the potential effects from the proposed construction and operation of a new federal courthouse in Hartford. NIPA also requires the consideration of public input throughout the process. The draft EIS public review period, which we are currently in, is an important opportunity for you to provide your comments on the project. GSA will consider your input during the decision-making process and development of the final EIS. GSA initiated the EIS process by publishing a notice of intent in the Federal Register on May 26, 2023. GSA conducted public scoping between May 26 and July 6, 2023, and held a public scoping meeting on June 6, 2023. GSA used the information received during the scoping process to develop the draft EIS. Impacts from the proposed alternatives were analyzed, and the findings were documented in the draft EIS. We are currently in the public comment period for the draft EIS, which began on the 1st of November. The draft EIS is available for public review for 45 days through December 16, 2024. The final EIS is slated to be published in early 2025. NIPA requires a 30-day waiting period after publication of the final EIS before an agency can complete its Record of Decision, or ROD. The ROD explains an agency's decision, describes the alternatives that were considered, and discusses plans for mitigation and monitoring if needed. It will state the preferred alternative selected by GSA. The ROD is anticipated to be published early in 2025. Issuance of the ROD signifies the end of the NIPA process. I will now turn it over to Judge Shea to discuss the project itself. And I will advance the slide for you.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming out tonight to this meeting. We're here to discuss the new federal courthouse for which the federal district court has been in great need for a long time. First, a little bit of background. The United States District Court for the District of Connecticut currently operates in three facilities: one in Hartford, which is the one we're here to discuss, one in New Haven, and one in Bridgeport. Studies have concluded that relocating the court's headquarters from New Haven to Hartford would provide efficiencies in judicial operations across the state. Why do we need a new federal courthouse? Well, the current building that houses the federal district court in Hartford is called the Ribbikoff. It was built in 1963, and it was not built for a modern federal courthouse. It does not have the capacity to accommodate the court's operations and functions. It's not adequate from a security standpoint. I could go on, but there is no modern federal courthouse in the United States that looks like the Ribbikoff courthouse. It's outdated. Just one last comment. You know, from the court's perspective, our goal is to build a symbol of justice, one that befits the dignity and mission of a federal court, and one that serves the people of Hartford, the state of Connecticut, and the communities the court serves, the litigants, the lawyers, and the public. Of course, we are in uncertain times, and we will have to wait and see how new budget realities may affect our ability to implement a full project. Although we have received $335 million to date from Congress, and of course, that's a lot of money, high-cost inflation in the construction industry in recent years may mean that we will have to scale back from the full program described in the Environmental Impact Statement while still building a modern, beautiful federal courthouse. So I'm now going to turn it over to GSA's Project Manager, Bob Herman.
Thank you, Chief Judge Shea. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Bob Herman, GSA's Project Manager. I've been managing federal projects for about 25 years, almost exclusively for the judiciary over the last 18. I'm absolutely honored to be involved in this landmark project and looking forward to working with the folks of Hartford to get through this project. A little bit about our purpose and need. The purpose of this: to meet the current and long-term space needs of the court and related agencies by providing an adequate number of courtrooms, judges' chambers, and other office space in Hartford to ensure judicial -- efficient judicial operations across the state of Connecticut. As far as the need, the project is needed because of the Ribbikoff Federal Building and courthouse is simply inadequate in size and configuration for the court operations. This includes deficiencies in judicial detainee, juror circulation, and overall facility So a little bit about the project. The building will be approximately 281,000 gross square feet. It will have up to 11 courtrooms, 18 chambers. It will include offices for the court and related agencies, the U.S. Marshals, probation, and United States bankruptcy. It will include 66 secure parking spaces. And we will follow the U.S. Green Building Council. This will be a LEED Gold Certified Building, and it will be a Certified Site Silver for the site. Additionally, we'll follow a very extensive sustainability program. Again, I'm very much looking forward to this project, and I appreciate everyone's input tonight in hopes that we can get to a point where we make our final selection and we can move on with this project. So I thank you. I'll turn it over to Sarah, our Site Lead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Masarello, and I'm the Lead Site Program Manager for GSA in Region One, which is New England, because we cover all the New England states. If you all were here last year, we had our scoping meeting. We spoke about the site selection process, and at the time, we had three sites that were under consideration. Those sites both accommodate up to a courthouse of 281,000 gross square feet, and they're within the city limits of Hartford. Since that scoping meeting last year, one of the sites has been rescinded from consideration. So the two that are still remaining are the Woodland Site in yellow and the Allen Site in pink. The Hudson Site, which I've grayed out in this exhibit here, is no longer under consideration. The draft EIS, it studies three alternatives. Two are called the action alternatives, and each action alternative corresponds to one of the sites. So action alternative one is the Woodland Site. It is 10 acres of land in the city of Hartford in the Asylum Hill neighborhood. It has a state office building. It is just south of St. Francis Hospital, and it's bordered by asylum at Woodland Street and the North Branch of the Park River. The action alternative two is the Allen Site. It is a surface parking lot on about 2 acres of land. It is in between the Excel Center on the east and Union Station on the west. It's bordered by Allen Street, Church Street, and High Street. The NIPA process also requires that we study a no-action alternative, which is the status quo, and that's used as a baseline for analysis in the report. This is an exhibit showing the Woodland Site. Like I said, it is kind of bordered by St. Francis Hospital to the north, the North Branch River to the west. It also has Class Hall High School just to the north and the UConn School of Law to the west. The Allen Site, it is between the train station and the Excel Center and just north of Bushnell Park. It also has the Cotter Federal Building, which is just kitty-corner from the Allen Site, and that building is also owned and managed by GSA. Now I'm going to hand it back over to Leon, and he's going to walk us through the draft EIS analysis of the different resources.
Thank you, Sarah. As you can see, this slide is an overview or a summary of the potential effects to the different resource areas that were analyzed in the draft EIS. For each of the 12 resource areas analyzed, this slide provides a summary of the potential effects under the project alternatives. Resource areas may experience both beneficial and adverse effects under each alternative. Beneficial effects are shown in green here for resources experiencing a range of adverse effects. The most severe adverse effect is the one presented. As you can see, the no-action alternative on the right, the rightmost column, would have no effects on most resource areas under consideration and would only have negligible to minor effects on three resources. Today's discussion will focus only on select resources, those that have the potential to experience greater impacts compared to other resource areas. But before we proceed to the next slide, I would like to note that there are -- that there may or may not be major adverse effects to cultural resources for the Woodland Site. While preliminary surveys have been conducted for this site, further investigations are needed to determine the historic significance of the Woodland Site structures, which will ultimately inform the final effects determination. In the absence of extensive surveys, it is not possible to accurately determine the magnitude of impact to this resource, and so a worst-case scenario was assumed for cultural resources analysis. Okay, this slide looks at potential effects to land use. First up, alternative one would have minor beneficial effects on land use due to compliance with Hartford zoning designation and future land use goals, and would partially adhere to the goals of the Asylum Hill Strategic Plan, such as restoration of the North Branch Park River. There would be negligible adverse effects from the removal of the Woodland Site from Connecticut's payment in lieu of taxes or pilot program. A pilot program provides annual grants to local municipalities to make up for real estate tax losses due to exemptions. This is particularly relevant because the Woodland Site is a state-owned property and exempt from local taxation. There would also be minor adverse effects from noncompliance with the neighborhood's strategic plan goals focusing on the development of residences and retail spaces in the area. Under alternative two, there would be minor beneficial effects on land use due to compliance with Hartford zoning designation and future land use goals. There would be negligible adverse impacts from the removal of the Allen Site from Hartford's tax base due to its conversion to tax-exempt federal use. This slide looks at potential effects to traffic and transportation. Alternative one would have moderate adverse effects to traffic from lane closures and restrictions during construction. Operation of the new courthouse is expected to generate 321 additional average daily trips, six new AM peak hour trips, and seven new PM peak hour trips. As you can see, the use of the Woodland Site as a federal courthouse would be very similar to its current use as a state government office, and is not anticipated to substantially increase traffic at the site. There would be minor adverse effects from the lack of sufficient parking. However, GSA's proposal to pursue options to provide additional parking, such as by entering into a lease with a commercial parking operator, would offset some of these adverse effects. Alternative two would have minor adverse effects to traffic from lane closures and restrictions during construction. The project would generate 2,851 additional average daily trips, 162 new AM peak hour trips, and 145 new PM peak hour trips when the courthouse is in operation. A substantial increase would occur due to the change in the use of the site from a parking lot to a government building. Adverse effects to parking would be negligible due to the availability of ample public parking in downtown Hartford. Similar to alternative one, GSA would pursue options to provide additional parking at the Allen Site. This slide looks at potential effects to solid and hazardous waste of materials. Under alternative one, there would be negligible adverse effects from accidental spills and leaks of fuel and chemicals during construction. There would be moderate adverse impacts from the generation and disposal of hazardous building materials like asbestos and lead-based paint and potential contaminant runoff from standing waste. Under alternative two, there would be negligible adverse effects from accidental spills and leaks of fuel and chemicals during construction. There would be moderate adverse impacts from the generation of contaminated excavation waste and potential contaminant runoff from standing waste. There would also be minor adverse impacts from the increased generation and management of solid and hazardous waste and materials as the site usage would change from a parking lot to a government building. Under the no-action alternative, there would be minor adverse effects from the continued management of waste from building operations at the existing courthouse. Now we're looking at potential effects to socioeconomics. Under alternative one, there would be negligible beneficial impacts on socioeconomics due to opportunities for community engagement between the court and students from neighboring educational institutes. There would be beneficial effects from employment opportunities during construction and an overall increased level of economic activity in the neighborhood. As discussed earlier, there would be negligible adverse effects from the removal of the Woodland Site from Connecticut's pilot program. The project would represent a 0.12% decrease in Hartford's tax base. Alternative two would result in negligible to minor effects on socioeconomics due to increased employment opportunities during construction and an overall increased economic activity in the neighborhood. There would be negligible adverse effects from the removal of the Allen Site from Hartford's tax base, representing a 0.07% decrease in the city's tax base. And this slide looks at potential effects to cultural resources. Under alternative one, there would be no impacts to archaeological resources, as none are present at the Woodland Site. As discussed earlier, the Woodland Site has not been evaluated for historic significance, and GSA has not reached a final determination for the magnitude of effects for archaeological resources at the site. If the Woodland Site structures are determined to be historically significant, the site and the project may have moderate to major impacts on historic properties. There would be no effects if the structures are determined not to be historically significant. There may be negligible beneficial or adverse effects to the viewshed of historic resources in the vicinity of the Woodland Site. Under alternative two, there may be negligible to moderate beneficial or adverse effects to archaeological resources. Beneficial effects would occur if the project activities led to the discovery of historically or culturally important resources. Adverse effects would occur if project activities led to the destruction of these discovered resources. No effects to archaeological resources would occur if none are found during project activities. There are no historic properties on the Allen Site. There may be negligible beneficial or adverse effects to the viewshed of historic resources in the vicinity of the Allen Site. Turning to potential effects on water resources, under alternative one, there would be minor adverse effects to surface waters during construction from potential sediment or contaminant runoff and accidental spills. Once the new courthouse is in operation, there would be negligible adverse impacts from building maintenance and minor beneficial impacts from implementation of green infrastructure measures. There would be minor beneficial impacts to wetlands due to the potential reestablishment of riparian and wetland vegetation from implementation of a new landscape plan. Similarly, there would be negligible beneficial effects to the North Branch Park River floodplain due to the removal of impervious surfaces. Under alternative two, there would be similar short- and long-term adverse effects to surface waters as alternative one, but no beneficial effects. There would be no effects to wetlands or floodplains. Now this site looks at best management practices and mitigation measures. To avoid or minimize impacts to the resource areas just discussed, GSA would implement a suite of best management practices, or BMPs, or mitigation measures specific to each To minimize effects from solid and hazardous waste, GSA would conduct additional investigations to verify contamination in the soil. Removal and disposal of hazardous waste would be carried out by licensed contractors, and waste would be frequently removed from the construction site. The BMPs for cultural resources may vary based on the site selected by GSA for the project. GSA contractors will be provided with an inadvertent discovery plan for cultural resources and human remains, which shall be implemented if such materials are recovered during construction, regardless of the alternative selected. If the Woodland Site is selected, GSA will do a formal evaluation of the properties to determine their historic significance. If the properties are found to be eligible, compliance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act would involve consultation with interested parties, including the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Officer, to identify potential mitigation measures to minimize adverse effects. To protect water resources, GSA contractors would implement stormwater pollution prevention plan and sediment control strategies, such as silt fencing and temporary seeding. Stormwater BMPs, such as detention ponds and vegetated soils, would be installed. Then we're looking at next steps and anticipated timeline. GSA is soliciting comments on the draft EIS and will consider all substantive comments during the -- received during the development of the final EIS. The last day to submit public comments on the draft EIS is December 6, 2024. As you can see, NIPA falls under the project planning and development phase. We are estimating to complete the NIPA process in early 2025. Subsequently, the design phase will begin in 2025, and construction will commence in 2027. It is anticipated that the courthouse will be fully occupied by 2030. These are estimated timeframes that are subject to change. GSA will provide updates via the GSA website. And with that, we will now begin the public comment section.
All right, as Leon mentioned, we're about to move into the public comment section of this, but before we do, I wanted to remind you of a few things. There are multiple ways that you can submit comments to us in person. You can fill out the comment cards that are here tonight and leave them with us before you leave. You can email us. You can email those comments to hartfordcourthouse@gsa.gov. I finally get -- is getting the slides right. You can mail the comments to Bob at the address on the screen. And there's also a drop box at the Ribbikoff at 450 Main Street. Just wanted to reemphasize one date: December 16, not 6. Postmarked by, if you're doing it by mail. Some common etiquette before we get going here. Once you're called to come up and comment, please step up to the microphone, state and spell your first and last name at the start of your comment. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name or can't read your handwriting. Sorry. Be respectful of other participants and presenters. Remain quiet while others are speaking. We do have a bunch of folks that want to comment verbally tonight, so we're limiting comments to two minutes. If time allows, after everyone has commented and you want to continue your comment, we will allow you to do that. A recording of this meeting will be available online at gsa.gov/hartfordcourthouse, and your comments will be included in the administrative record. I also saw somebody taking pictures of the slides. All of this presentation will also be online at that website that I mentioned. All right, I'll leave that up. We'll now move into our first commenter. Our first commenter tonight is Jessica Rubin.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Rubin, J.E.S.S.I.C.A. Rubin, R-U-B-I-N. I'm the Associate Dean for Experimental Education at UConn Law School. Our dean, Abby Nelson, has a conflict that prevents her from attending tonight's meeting. I'm here on behalf of the law school to express our support for locating the courthouse at the Woodland Site, which is a neighbor to the law school. Proximity would allow collaborations between the two institutions. For example, judges, court personnel, and agency personnel could make use of UConn's Law Library and attend our events, and students at the law school could benefit from educational and other opportunities at the court. Further, the law schools can Further, the law school's campus is expanding. The university recently acquired Mackenzie Hall, a 32,000-square-foot building in close proximity to the Woodland Site. And the law school has its clinics and other legal services programs in Mackenzie Hall. We appreciate the concerns raised by some neighbors regarding congestion. We do think, however, that the new courthouse at Woodland Site presents an opportunity to create a vibrant legal nexus in the area, and together with the existing UConn Law Campus and Mackenzie Hall, a new courthouse would create a hub of legal activities around the Buick Hall and North Park River. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Henry Zacks.
Henry M. Zacks, H-E-N-R-Y, M. Z is in zebra, A, Arthur C. Charlie, A, Henry, S. Sam. I'm very familiar with the Hudson Site, and it is no good, and I'm on the Bushel Board approving. The second site downtown Hartford that is only good for the parking lot operators, and is a terrible site. The Woodland, the Woodland Site, to reconstruct that building is absolutely foolish, foolish, and you have wetlands in the back where the river is, so you couldn't even build a garage. The only site that I know of, other than the Epte atrium building, is the Danny Site, the old Seuss Mini Site on Flatbush Avenue, where you have a bus stop, you have an exit from the highway, and you've got local things, and you've got 34 acres. So if the federal building went there, there'd be more than enough other buildings to be developed, and that is the highest in destuies, and it's the best for the city of Hartford. And I've been here for 90 years, and I know.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Kevin Kenny.
Hi, Kevin Kenny, K-E-V-I-N, K-E-N-N-Y. I'm speaking out tonight in support of the Allen Street Site. I am an owner of a commercial brokerage in downtown Hartford. We have recently been responsible for bringing in a multitude of new retail businesses into downtown Hartford as we continue to rise from the ashes of the COVID-19 pandemic. And, you know, I vehemently disagree with the findings that there will be negligible effects on socioeconomic activity in downtown Hartford. The prospect of this site, you know, potentially being a federal courthouse, has already yielded us activity on the retail side of things with national tenants. You know, on behalf of all the recent businesses that we place in downtown Hartford, I'm speaking out on behalf of them, the small business owners, that really would get an incredible boost from the activity that the courthouse would bring to downtown. I also transversely can say that the Woodland Site, I truly believe, will bring all the lunch and dinner activity to West Hartford Center. And they have enough business already. I think that this would be a huge boon to downtown Hartford. And my last comment is on the office side of things. You know, Hartford has a looming cloud over their head as it relates to office space, and I think that this courthouse would be a major boost to attracting more law firms to downtown Hartford, which we desperately need. And it's a big issue that the city is up against, and it's imminent, and I think anything that could help us fill our office buildings will help the tax rolls of Hartford and help, you know, the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Jeff Stewart.
Hi, Jeffrey Stewart, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y-S-T-E-W-A-R-T. I'm a Hartford resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of my neighbor who couldn't get here. The question is, if you do take the Woodland Site, I'm not sure if this is in your purview, the Woodland Street Site, for people in need of transit get there, the bus service going Woodland Asylum is not as frequent stopoff, so people who are using the port, someone may have to look at terms of the bus schedule so that it would be more usable for people who either do the bus stop. So you have five years to figure it out, so maybe you can do that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Matthew Jasinski.
Hi, Matthew with one T, M-A-T-H-E-W Jasinski, J-A-S-I-N-S-K-I. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I lived in Hartford for about 20 years and moved here to attend law school at the University of Connecticut, so I'm very familiar with that campus and its location. And I do see the Woodland Street as having one upside, and that is the proximity to UConn Law. I see everything else about that site as a downside. I currently practice in downtown Hartford. I am a litigator, and I practice at federal court. I can walk to that courthouse. I would not be able to walk to the courthouse in Asylum Hill, so that's going to be additional traffic on the roads that you need to consider in terms of current practitioners who can walk to the courthouse at Ribikoff and could not walk to the courthouse in Asylum Hill. And I do, I heard the comment about retail and restaurants and like, and I think that all of that is very true. There's nothing like that in Asylum Hill. It's a very difficult place for anything like that to really grow up, and there's nothing to sustain it other than the courthouse and the hospital that's there. This, the Allen Street property, which is what I'm obviously speaking favor for, is incredibly proximate to Union Station, train station. That is the hub of transportation in the region, both for local buses, for Amtrak, for attorneys who are coming from out of town, for Metro North, or at least connecting Metro North in New Haven, for the busway that takes you to New Britain and other places. So for folks who have a hard time getting to court via car, they can travel that way. For lawyers who are traveling into town, it would be very easy for them to travel in and out of Hartford at Union Station. If they have to leave court and catch a train, they can do so immediately. So I see a lot of upside to a courthouse downtown. I see only one upside to the courthouse at the Woodland Site, and that's UConn Law. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Daniel Kelman.
Hi, I'm Daniel Kelman, D-A-N-I-E-L, K-E-L-M-A-N. I've lived in Hartford since 1976, most recently on Gerard Avenue, about a half a mile west of the Woodland Street Site. I want to echo all of the comments made by the previous speaker, including all the advantages of being downtown on Allen Street, one block from the major transportation hub of the greater Hartford area. This affects all visitors, judges, jurors, witnesses, friends and family who want to be able to get to the courthouse by any possible means, and you can't do better than the site on Union Station, a block from Union Station for that. The other point I would like to make is more on the construction side of it. I don't know whether the GSA is aware of a request for proposals for reconstruction of the Asylum Avenue Bridge between Elizabeth Street and Woodland Street. There is an RFP out there. I don't know when construction is supposed to start, but that could impact your plans. I just wanted to make you aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is David Griggs.
Good evening. David Griggs, D-A-V-I-D, Griggs, G-R-I-G-G-S. I am the president and CEO of the Metro Hartford Alliance, which includes the Hartford Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to first thank the GSA for bringing this exciting project to Hartford. We look forward to working with Mr. Herman to make sure that this architecturally significant building is in the right spot in the city of Hartford. I appreciate you showing the images of previous courthouses built. I hope everybody got a chance to take a look. These are exciting, beautiful buildings that will add to the fabric of our community. Where we need to add that fabric to our community is on the Allen Street Site to take advantage of the nearby transportation, to take advantage of the nearby amenities that are already being built, have been built in downtown Hartford, from the rail to the bus, to the restaurants, the retail hotels. So on behalf of the Metro Hartford Alliance, Hartford Chamber of Commerce, welcome to our city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we look forward to seeing this in downtown
Thank you. Our next commenter is Mary Falvey.
Good evening. My name is Mary Falvey, M-A-R-Y, F like in Frank, A-L-V like in Victor, E-Y. I am the executive director of the Hartford Preservation Alliance. We are a nonprofit tasked with advocating for the preservation of all our cultural resources in Hartford. For the Woodland Street Lot, which is the former Phoenix Insurance Company, I would respectfully request that, if it is determined to be eligible for the national or state-registered historic places, which I'm confident it will be, that you not consider mitigation, but move on. We've lost way too much historic cultural resources in Hartford. We don't need to lose any more. You indicate for negligible adverse effect because of losing the pilot program. Hartford is overburdened with state properties. We are, you know, we're the end, and every dime we can get to our tax rolls, be it by pilot or private, we need. Also, you're skewed to parking. We are still in the automobiles as key phase. As other commenters have said, this is a hub. The Allen Street Site is the hub for the transit. We would greatly reduce the need for parking spaces being available to public transit. The recent commenter said about the distance to the law school. We're more of a large town than a small city, and none of the students at UConn live on campus, so I don't think there would be impediment for them to have coordination of programs at the Allen Street Lot. And lastly, the reason why this lot is available and is a parking lot is because they clearcutted historic buildings back in the 90s for potential development that never happened. Using the Allen Street Lot would be a benefit to reusing that space the way it's meant to be, and I think it would be a benefit for the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Jane Davy.
Hi, I'm Jane, J-A-N-E-D-A-V-E-Y. I represent the ownership group for the Allen Street Site, and I'm also a resident of the West End. First, I want to thank the GSA for all of their work in compiling this draft environmental impact statement. A lot of work went into it, and we appreciate all that. Obviously, it's a draft report, thus implying there will be further refinements as we walk through this process. I'm wondering if in the final EIS you're planning to include transit maps that would show where the bus and train lines actually go relative to the site, as opposed to just showing where the stops are. I know that as precedent, in the final report done for the Des Moines, Iowa courthouse, the transit maps were included to show the locations relative. Similarly, I think a map showing availability of public parking relative to the sites would be important so that everyone, reading the report, could see the relative availability of both on-street and off-street parking. Finally, I think it would be helpful in the report to show a map which pointed out where the various retail corridors are and their relative proximity to the two sites. So hopefully, as the report moves on into the final form, those additions will be added so that we can all view on equal ground what the sites look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is John Davy.
Good evening. John, J-O-H-N, Davy, D-A-V-E-Y. My wife just spoke. I, too, am a resident of the West End. I think right down the street from law school. I think most people who live in the West End understand that asylum is a major thoroughfare. Traffic gets terrible. It took me four minutes to get out of my driveway. I live on Asylum Avenue. Tonight at 6 o'clock, get over here, traffic is terrible in the morning, it's terrible in the evening, people coming in and out of town. I think that, you know, given what some of the other commenters have been talking about, you know, and I've mentioned this before at some other of these meetings, there's no cafeteria, right, in this building. People are going to have to go out to lunch. Where are they going to go? What is that going to mean for traffic on the streets? So I do think that, you know, this poses additional traffic problems. I think that, you know, some of the things that I'm hearing, it doesn't seem mutually exclusive that the law school can go downtown, right, if that's something that's important to them, to, you know, coordinate, to work with the courthouse. But most people in the West End, most people that I know, don't even know that this is going on. When I tell people that this site is being considered as a courthouse, they look at me and they think I'm joking. So, you know, I don't think that people are really, you know, would be in favor of this in the West End. I can't speak for Asylum Hill, but I, for one, think that it would be a bad decision to put it there, and, you know, I hope that the GSA decides to go with Allen Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, and I apologize, it's a little hard to read, Herman LaFontaine.
Good evening. My name is Hernan LaFontaine, H-E-R-N-A-N-L-A-F-O-N-T-A-I-N-E. I hope I got that right. The fact of the matter is that I realize it's very busy here tonight, and I don't want to take too much time, but I have two concerns. As a longtime resident of Hartford and living right on Asylum Avenue, Goodwin Circle, I was a little late coming today because of the traffic. As the previous speaker said, it is in the mornings, in the afternoon, it's in the evening, all day long, heavy, heavy traffic. And one actually has to consider whether I should go the way I'm supposed to go to my destination, or turn around and go the other way and take a long, contorted route to get to my destination, which is becoming more of a standard practice for people in the West End. So clearly, the issue of traffic congestion is something that cannot be avoided, and it has to be dealt with one way or the other. And when I saw the numbers in the slide, it seemed to somehow not quite give the understanding and the picture of how severe that traffic congestion can be. That is traffic congestion. The other thing is the parking, which has already been mentioned, but once again, I generally always tend to think about when new construction, build underground parking space, leave more levels, whatever it takes to accommodate the kind of parking that's anticipated. I know the response is always, well, that's very expensive, that's very expensive. But... But in the long run, it may be the kind of expense that we should afford, given the fact of the impact on the community. That's my first point. And by the way, not the only one, but associated with that is the question of the cost and so on, and the tax alleviation or not. I also was, believe it or not, a politician in one life, and I was the president of the Hartford City Council. And one of the issues that we dealt with all the time was, we're not a rich city, and we need every penny we can get, and in every way that we can get it, from whatever source. And it is not so simple to simply dismiss it. It's a negligible effect. Any effect which does not increase the revenue is going to be difficult. My final point. I was a superintendent of schools here in Hartford, and I, of course, have been an educator all my life, and that's the prime concern that I always have. And when you look at the school across the street from Woodland, the Hartford Classical Magnet School, there are buses lined up because there is no other place. I mean, you can't blame them. But when those buses, seven, eight, or nine line, line up, and then there's traffic already in the thing, the congestion is going to be incredible. And it also leads to the question of safety for the students. No matter what we say, no matter what age they are, the more you increase the number of cars and students in there that move about, that's going to be a real problem, and it's something that has to be dealt with very, very seriously. If nothing else, in addition to the underground parking, any kind of site development should have access to the parking entrance amendment on Woodland and not on Asylum, because that'll just slow down everything else even further. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to have you here in my positions, and I'm very, very concerned about this as a longtime Hartford resident. And in fact, with the experience of the traffic situation in the little town where I grew up in the island of Manhattan, in New York, that traffic was the ever, ever constant evil. And we've got to kind of pay attention to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last commenter is Mary Rickel Pelletier. Can I hear that again?
Hi. So I'm Mary, M A R Y, Pelletier, P E L L, E T I E R. Oh, and there's Rickel, and there are I C K E Ls, making names. So I'm speaking as a resident of the, of the West End. I live in eighty Elizabeth Street with my husband and have since two thousand. I'm also the founding director of Park Watershed, five oh one C three, for the Hartford Regional Watershed. I want to mention, thank you for having this process. And, and I really appreciate the rule of law and the need for architecture, landscape architecture that's done by the government to be designed as a symbol of justice. And I want to note that as a resident, I'm really kind of six or one half dozen of the other about the two sites. But I do, as I am trained in design, and I do think that the Allena site is probably a more cost-conscious site. And I'd like to point out that your report is missing that there's an MDC trunk line that's carrying sewage from the northern neighborhoods of Hartford and Bluefield down through the sixty-one Woodland site. And the cleanout and the siphon that goes under the river is on the property of, the Woodland Street property on the west side of the river. But more than anything, I'd like to point out that if the GSA were to take the Woodland Street site, it would greatly benefit the restoration of the North Grand Triperian Zone, especially the flood plain, which is owned by the state of Connecticut. It's been paved, and it was paved for the previous use as, as parking, where I think it was the tech school which moved downtown. Hopefully, the GSA involvement and the Woodland site would inspire the University of Connecticut Law School and the state of Connecticut, which owns these properties, to become decision-making makers about consciousness and stewardship of, of the environment. The state property, especially the UConn Law School, could achieve higher goals with respect to the environment. And not just to reduce energy use, which is of course a big issue for the leadership in environmental design standards, but also for the site quality, for the environmental health. Most notably, the University of Connecticut could conserve its west side of the Riparian Zone, as can GSA. And that would contribute to an overall international goal of conserving thirty percent of our natural resources across the planet, but also locally. So that would do a lot in actually reducing the urban heat element, improving urban air quality, and making our lives more livable in both the West End, Asylum Hill, and the overall city of Hartford. So I think the GSA, this whole process has been very beneficial. Hopefully, the UConn Law School will, whatever choo, whatever site the GSA chooses, perhaps the state will begin to raise its standards as well in this location. Thank you.
So that was our last commenter. As we said at the beginning, if there's anyone that would like to expand or add to their comments, please feel free to serve the feature.
Hi, John Davy again, J O H N, D A V E Y. One thing I was hoping for clarification on was the statistics about the traffic trips. What were the dates on that? Was that, you know, in the height of work from home? Is that forward-looking? And so I'm hoping that we can get a little clarification on that.
Thank you. Sir?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Hi, Daniel Kelman, D A N I E L, K E L M A N. I just want to echo Hernan LaFontaine's comments about the loss of pilot revenue to the city of Hartford. Any loss of tax revenue is not negligible. So I think that's a mischaracterization of that loss. To counter that, I would again advocate for the Allen Street site. I would, I know, I don't know whether economic development is part of the goals that you're looking at in the EIS, but certainly having a new building like that with that volume of people and traffic every day might just kickstart the redevelopment of Union Place, which has been dead for several decades. When I moved to Hartford in the mid-seventies, Union Place was hopping. There were clubs, there were restaurants, twenty-four hours a day. Connecticut lunch was open twenty-four hours. And you go down there now, it's nothing. Half of it was torn down already for another parking lot. Maybe the, the northern half can be saved or revived by a building on Allen Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire?
Emily Jean Quinto, E M I L Y, last name is G I A N Q U I N T O. I wasn't going to speak because I was here at the June meeting, but I'm a Hartford resident for about twenty years. I'm a lawyer who works downtown, and I live over in the southwest neighborhood. At the June meeting, I expressed my support for the Allen site. My opinion has not changed. I've skimmed through the report that's online as well. I, I have a lot of the same opinions of some of the speakers today, but I just wanted to emphasize that this is a public building. The federal courthouse is an important public building that offers important public services. And so while yes, as a lawyer, I want to still be able to walk to the courthouse, and I, as a, as a Hartford resident, I, I think anytime we can turn a parking lot into a building, it's a great idea. I also think that the key here is the public access. And the downtown site is just infinitely more accessible for people who need to, to get there, for people whose loved ones are involved in criminal proceedings or immigration proceedings, for members of the public who want to come and watch a proceeding, for the jurors who are called to serve there. I just, it, there are so many public transportation options there and much easier access, even if they're driving, that are just not available at the Woodland site. And I'm also an alum of the law school, and I love the idea of the courthouse being so close to the law school. But downtown is not far away for the students. I went and observed proceedings there when I was at the law school. So I don't think that that's a barrier, and I certainly don't think that the benefit to frankly, a small number of law students outweighs the benefit to the large numbers of members of the public who need to access this federal building.
Thank you. Claire?
Good evening. My name is Caroline Austin, C A R O L I A N, A U S T I N. I'm a resident of Hartford for just about twenty-five years. I'm from New York, city Brooklyn. And as a parent leader, as well as a resident of Asylum Hill, I feel the need to speak out and echo a lot of what was said earlier. However, I also want to highlight, as a parent of children that live in Asylum Hill, I live on Asylum Avenue, and the traffic is horrible, as everyone else has said. Hard to get out just about any time of the day. Nobody wants to stop. We've been trying to get part of the light pushed back so that we could, and I live across the street from the bus station, just for some context, but we can't, and we're in process. However, as a parent, yes, there is this bus safety, yes, there are the car safety, but there's also the elements that would be coming into the neighborhood because they have to. And it's, it's just a natural part of the process of people having to go to court, you have criminal court, and the like. And the school is directly across the street. And a lot of parents I've spoken to have a huge issue with that. I have an issue with that. Even though my children don't go to Classical Magnet, I would not want to have further elements that come into the neighborhood because they have to go to the courthouse to just be there, and our kids have access to them, and them have access to our kids. And that's just the reality of it. And so I won't take up too much of the time, but as a parent, I am concerned, and I would really like to see, as well, it be downtown. It's downtown. Downtown is supposed to have courthouses and shopping and places to eat. And I would like to see Asylum Hill stay presidential. Thank you. With this essence. Thank you.
Sir? Henry Zacks, H E R Y, Z A C H S. I'd like to retract what I said about downtown Hartford. I think that's where it should be. It should not be on Woodland Street. That building, rehabbed or knocked down, is the wrong place. Wrong part of town. Should be downtown. Or if you're not going to do it downtown, look at the atrium building, which is virtually vacant, or look at the Soosman Rockery.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so as a reminder, other ways if you don't want to comment while you're here. Postmark or receive by December sixteen. You can fill out the comment cards and leave them here. You can email us at that email address. Bob will spam mail. You can mail it to Bob at that address, or you can drop it at the drop box at the RiverBock. Unless there's anything else, thank you all for coming tonight. We look forward to your comments.